I'd be glad to. I'm going to keep it brief on purpose because I'd really love the opportunity to get to the questions portion anyway. But hello, everybody. My name is Lisa Roth and I am a parent of two children here. I've lived in Ipswich about seventeen, eighteen years now. I've lost track. My children, thirteen, my son, he is an Ipswich Public School student, except he goes to a school out of town that is specialized for children with autism. My daughter is eleven and she is finishing fifth grade now, will be moving on to middle school. I, just for who I am, where I come from, I work in the regulatory department of a biotech company in Cambridge. And prior to that, I worked for about fourteen years at a grant-funded cancer research organization. And I think among the many things I learned there, one of the biggest ones relevant here is how to make the most of a taxpayer dollar, given that 100% grant-funded nonprofit you learn to make do. I'm running for the school committee because I would like to see and take the committee and the district to a new level of cooperation in terms of finding the right path forward. We've got a lot of major projects facing us, most of which are long overdue for the town of Ipswich. Some of these are school and some of them are otherwise. For the town and the schools to succeed, it is going to take a significant amount of cooperation, critical thinking, and sometimes some tough decision-making. It's also going to take a lot of listening. I've welcomed the opportunity to meet new residents that I haven't had the opportunity to meet until now along the way and discuss their concerns. I welcome the opportunity to follow up with anybody after this who may have some questions lingering in their minds. One of the main themes you'll hear from me tonight is about thinking about how we can use metrics and information to guide us, to both put them where they haven't been thus far, but also to make clearer uses of existing ones. You know, I mentioned I come from a healthcare research background and data is where it's at. However, I think-
I'm Diana Freehan. I am the mother of three kids, Julia, Marie, and Dante. Julia's our oldest and she's in first grade. I was raised in Ipswich, graduated from Ipswich Public Schools, and my husband Phil's also a lifelong resident. So why am I running? I love this town. I want to give back to our community. I know I have the character and skills to be a productive school committee member in support of our public education. Professionally, I'm a nurse. I work in labor and delivery at a community hospitals and we serve a diverse population. I've been on our hospital-wide nursing policy committee and I was also clinical leader on our unit for three years. I wrote, managed, and reviewed policies and implemented necessary changes on our unit. I've been trained in quality improvement. I've led projects focused on efficiency and patient experience. And I've come to understand and value the importance of stakeholder engagement. So with this in mind, if elected, I would bring expertise, hard work, and passion to the school committee, and specifically the goal to enhance communication between the school committee and the greater community of Ipswich. I know that strong schools are the result of strong community support.
My name is Jeff Corrier. I am a father of two children, one who's in second grade currently at the Winterfield School and another who's in the preschool program. Our younger daughter also has autism, so we've begun dipping our toe into the provision of special ed services and getting her some needed support. I professionally am an attorney. I have made my career working in real estate and corporate transactions where I fiercely negotiated with parties who wanted to get a deal done and represent, you know, clients zealously in getting to contracts. I've also spent a significant stint managing a firm that specializes in dispute resolution. And in that context, I was responsible for overseeing mediation and facilitated discussion settlements, much akin to the facilitator discussion that the school committee has recently embarked on. I chose to run for school committee this year after being exposed to issues, you know, facing schools as a school council member for two years. And I was motivated by, I think, an opportunity that's currently in our community with hiring of two new elementary principals, you know, renewed commitment to looking at the elementary school building, a look at how we're going to fund education going forward. And I think I have a lot to offer to be a part of that. I realize that the most important roles for school committee are listening to residents, that the school committee is an elected body, is there to represent everyone in the community. It's not to take your personal view or opinion and to assign that to others. And I look forward to being a contributing member if elected and being a voice, a measured voice and reason for all residents.
Hello, everybody. My name's Kate Elliott and I have been a member of the school committee since January, where I was appointed to fill an unexpected vacancy. And I have spent the last four months on the school committee, really learning and listening. And I feel that I'm now up to speed and ready to really make a difference heading into the next school year. And I want to be given the opportunity to continue what I've started. And instead of sort of coming up with a laundry list of things that I have done in town for the past twelve years or so, my volunteer experience, I was trying to think of ways that of kind of what really set me apart from the other candidates, because I do think we have, we have a fair amount of things in common. But I think what really sets me apart is my depth of experience and that perspective that I have, which I really feel is essential in any major town board, like the school committee or the select board. Over the years, I have sat in on many, many school committee meetings well before I was on the school committee, school building committee meetings, tri board meetings. And I do really have a working understanding of the school budget. I've seen principals and superintendent present many, many times and have lived through the bulk of a budget season on the school committee. And I also have that perspective and a working understanding of the other town priorities, like the townwide strategic plan and the climate resiliency, zero carbon resolution. So I really have that context. I think, you know, the school committee needs to not only think of the school needs, but also kind of in the context of the greater town, because the boards do really work collaboratively together. And I think that, that history and that perspective really is essential on the school committee. And, you know, I remember the budget cuts from 2011, 12, 13, 14. My daughter was in a kindergarten class of 26. I remember when the elementary school libraries, libraries weren't open because the librarians were cut from the budget. I remember when the fourth grade had no strings offered. And I think that perspective is really essential.
So first, we need to recognize our current reality. We have two inefficient buildings. They're crowded, costly, and unsustainable. There's no guarantees we'll be accepted back into the MSBA to fund approximately half of a future project. And the MSBA will only grant funding to one project per district at a time. So if we submit and are accepted over the next year or so, per recent school committee meeting, the project would potentially not be completed until 2027 to 2029. So if we are accepted and for another building project, it is essential that it passes. For the last project, I closely followed the process and actively supported the school committee's proposal. It held true to three themes that are critical to our town and in line with my values, and that's equitability, that all students in Ipswich would have access to the same education delivery offerings in an improved space at the same time. Fiscal responsibility, by simplifying the elementary school structure, capital that otherwise would have been deployed to costly upkeep of two failing buildings would be freed up to not only enhance elementary school, but the middle school and the high schools. And operational and energy efficiency. So it would streamline processes such as balancing class sizes and eliminating the need for the gray zone. And also resilient and sustainable infrastructure would be in line with our community development plan. So I think we need to think of the project from the inside out, where our students will be spending a significant amount of time in their childhoods. So we need to identify what would best serve our students inside the elementary school in the 2020s and through the future. And that might be a small school feel within a functional building, similar to what's achieved at the middle school and high school. Classroom to support fluctuating class sizes and space to uphold modern day education delivery, such as what is outlined in our education plans. And that includes project-based learning and special education pullout services. So if we can get excited about what's inside an improved space, we might all be able to become flexible on where the project will be located. So of the limited sites that are available, I would support a site that would have the space functionality and make sense for the building design we need. And importantly, the site must have overwhelming support from the town. So our voters must be clear on the repercussions of an elementary project not passing. And so how do we avoid a failed vote? Through two-way communication. So the school committee needs to be sensitive to the town and ensure there's buy-in throughout the process and leading up to the final vote, and pause if this isn't the case. And on the flip side, the school committee is tasked with being experts and no more than the average citizen. So they need to educate the town on the MSBA process and the fact that they will only form partnerships with districts who support projects that are educationally appropriate, flexible, sustainable, and cost-effective. So communication is vital. It's got to be early, consistent, and easy to access. And I do think that through clear and timely communication, we'll gain support from our town, resulting in a project that will benefit all students while proving to be a worthy investment of taxpayer revenue.
I agree with a lot of the points that Diana, you know, had just indicated, that this is an important decision that we need to make and the risk of failure is really too great for us not to be specific, strategic, and have consensus with our next plan. In the last vote, I voted against a single school project at the Doian site. I did that for specific reasons that I considered to be important, I still consider to be important. I look at the available locations and I think that there was a strong feeling that still exists that an in-town location is something that is valued in a community. I look at the costs of the building, and that was a 70-plus million-dollar proposal that didn't feel right. We were also told that that was going to be reimbursable to the town of Ipswich for 50%. And when the numbers came to it, that was not true. It was 39%. It was 27-point million of the overall cost. And I look at that and it said that was not the project that was pitched. There were flaws in that process that were, sorry, that were, began after the first town meeting vote, that the then-school committee decided to proceed with something that was already apparent not to be the consensus position. And then from there, it just evolved into a very harsh disagreement, and I think that those feelings are still evident today. I think the path forward is starting anew with the project, and it needs to be looked at again through that lens of what are the educational goals and priorities. I'm not sure that those have changed a lot in six years, but there's a new group of residents, a new group of families, and a new group of students. So I think that members of the school committee and members of the public need to examine from the beginning, again, what that process is going to look like from an educational standpoint. And then you can have discussions about how you're going to pick a site, a configuration, and how much you're going to decide to cost to spend on that project. I look back, you know, through my professional experience of seeing buildings built every single day and know that if somebody tells you a building is going to cost X, you need to put that into your budget, you need to then calculate what your different financing perspectives are, and we should know what the cost of that building is. I think that the MSBA is also going to want to see something different from us. They're not going to want to see another proposal that hasn't been changed. So they're going to ask us, what did you look at differently this time? And I want to make sure that all of those voices are being heard. I want to make sure that we're representing everyone and that we're coming up with a project that, again, is going to have consensus between many factions and is going to pass at the polls.
First to the elementary school project, you know, it's to be open-minded and it's essential that we get input from teachers and the community early on in this project. The project needs to be more transparent from the very start, which is why we have started to use a third-party facilitator in our conversations, just to ensure transparency from the very beginning. I feel a fatal, you know, one of probably several fatal flaws in our prior project was, you know, we submitted the statement of intent before we had community input and, you know, consensus, and we tried to get that after the statement of intent was submitted. But I strongly feel that we need consensus onsite and configuration before we submit the statement of intent this time around. But I also think it's important to say, we need to keep the focus on the kids and the elementary education plan and what is best for them. And that, to me, is more important than the site. I do think site matters. It's clearly something people are really passionate about. But if we look at things in the elementary education plan, it focuses on things like project-based learning, co-teaching, all these really exciting things that we could see in a new building. And that, I really want that to be the focus of what we get excited about and what we spend the most time talking about. I did vote for a single school at Doian. It was not my first choice, but I came around to it and I realized that, you know, in the very beginning of the project, I was for two schools. But as I listened and learned and, you know, my position evolved, I really see the benefits of a single school. You know, all kinds of benefits. It's the fiscally responsible thing to do, given all of the other things we have to do in our town and how expensive those other things are. It's faster to get done, and by that, I mean, we will spend less money on capital investments in the buildings while we're waiting. If we did two projects, it would take that much longer and we'd have to invest more money just to keep the school functioning. Things like teacher collaboration, flexibility for class sizes, bringing the parents' communities together, improving the cultures of the schools, and all of this is good timing with the new principals. So, you know, in short, I think we need to listen to each other and understand each other's perspective, you know. And, and I want everyone to know tonight that I don't have an agenda other than what's best for all kids. And I've heard, you know, I've heard a lot of things from a lot of people that felt really not listened to and burned by the last project on both sides. And, you know, we can't go through this again. And so I just encourage everyone to be open-minded and, you know, work together and listen and be patient. It's a long process. There's lots of ways to get involved, and I'm looking forward to getting that process turned in.
Thank you. This is a good question, and I know it's one that's on a lot of people's minds. I think one thing I've said to a few folks, and I'd like to say here, is this, to me, is a topic. I'd like to not see it be the topic. I think there's a lot else going on, and whether this passes or fails, we're going to have to look at a lot of issues and a lot of things that are going to need our attention going forward. So to, but to address it, because it is on a lot of people's minds. I did vote for the one school project. For me, it was never really a question of here versus there, of one versus two, of this versus that. For me, it was none versus any. And so I think, you know, the biggest bottom line I can offer is that making no change is not one of the available options for us right now, given the state of affairs at both of our schools. The School Dude Report, which is now already aged a couple of years at this point, so things have only not gotten better since then, I think told us just about all we needed to know about condition. And reviewing some of the, you know, being on the budget calls, that 20% of the town's capital budget this year, which is over a quarter of a million dollars going to refurbish and repair the elementary schools, that's not a sustainable year-to-year model. And there are a whole lot of other things we could be doing with a quarter of a million dollars if we can get ourselves to a place where there aren't going to be emergency maintenance on just about every system from one year to the next. But what I think is most important in this, you know, I don't care where a school goes, the fact is we need one. And so we need to keep in mind what, what almost got us there before and what kept us from getting there before, both, because those both factor in and how we're going to get there next time. You know, one thing I think is important is we have to make the financially responsible decision, both because of what the town is facing in terms of water replacement, in terms of other major infrastructure issues. There were quite a number of people who historically tend to be those no-voters, the no-on-spending voters, who recognize the need and are willing to support the right thing that, you know, accomplishes the right thing for the children, but does the right thing for their wallets as well. And those are a voting segment I think we can't afford to ignore. So no matter what happens, we're going to have to face the financially responsible decision. What I do think is probably likely to happen is one school, yes. And should that come along, again, I will be of yes. But, you know, my mind is open to whatever direction town wants to take us. You could very well find the split configuration option where perhaps we replace one school now and one school later might appeal to some of those more financially prudent people. They might find a larger total cost divided into two smaller segments over a longer period of time might fit their bill better than a one larger project at one time. My mind is open as long as we can get there.
I, I think generally, I mean, Prop 2 and 1/2 has created a situation that we have to deal with kind of arbitrary caps on what spending is, while the costs of government and education fundings don't cost less. So I do think that it's necessary for us to be able to generate revenue in other ways other than being able to get that just through a residential tax basis. Ipswich, I would consider to be a kind of middle-of-the-road town, which is actually one of the tougher places to be, because you're not counting on a ton of growth every year, and yet you don't have a really strong basis of some other towns to be able to generate enough money and then also have consistent supportive overrides. I have not lived in town long enough yet to have supported an override, but I am supportive of it because I understand what the cuts look like or what the cost is to not support it. I look at, you know, the obligation, the social contract of funding education as a priority in every community, and that's particularly one of the reasons why my family was drawn to living in Ipswich when we were looking for a place to be. I like a community and I want to live in a community that values educating other people's kids as much as they valued or value supporting their own. At the same time, I'm cognizant of the need to be responsible in what we ask for. So I look at items like a building and funding, teacher salaries, benefits, extracurricular act program, extracurricular activities, programming, unique curriculum, all of those being like, we're all coming out of the same spending pot. I do think we need to be fiscally responsible. We need to look at where there is waste. If we need to make cuts, we need to look to do those in a location where they do not have a tremendous, deteriorous effect on education. And where they do have an effect on education, we need to look at alternative and creative sources of funding. We're lucky in town to have other sources where we can rely on, but I do think that the overrides are a necessary piece, but we need to manage funds as if, or as seriously as we need to look at building and creating an education curriculum.
Thank you. I don't, I wouldn't say overrides make me happy, but I do have a, I have a lot of experience. I have worked on actually the last four overrides in town. The first couple, very peripherally, it was before my kids had joined the district. My mother-in-law roped me into volunteering and I didn't know what I was doing, but that was actually kind of how I got involved in sort of town activism back in 2008 or so. And the last, the most recent overrides in 2014 and 15, I was very heavily involved in the communications and leadership role in that. And, you know, I would love to say, you know, live within our means. And I think that's, you know, great on paper, but unfortunately, as Jeff stated, you know, we have the situation where we have this structural deficit, where, you know, because of Proposition 2 and 1/2 and new growth, we can only increase, you know, property taxes a limited amount every year, around 3% or so, depending on new growth. The fixed costs and things like insurance and retirement, those rise more than 3%. So the numbers just don't add up. So in order to kind of maintain the services we have every year, we have to make cuts every year to kind of keep the status quo, which is, you know, the unfortunate, the unfortunate reality. However, you know, I'm not, I'm not for overrides all the time. The more money, the better. I absolutely agree, we need to be fiscally responsible and we need to do everything we can every year to, you know, scrutinize the budget and keep it as close to that 3% as we can to avoid overrides, because I'm well aware of the burden it places on the taxpayers. And again, we're competing with lots of other projects in town that are very worthy and we have to be sensitive to that. We are in a lucky place in Ipswich that we do have some other funding sources, like FEPI money, like FEPI money, like Ipswich Education Foundation funds and grants, and this stabilization fund that the school committee has established that, that really give us some flexibility. They can't fund certain things, they're only for, you know, enrichment sorts of activities, the FEPI money anyways. But we can, we can be strategic and leverage that money, and we are very fortunate to have that, those sources of income that other districts don't have. And I think we need to use those and be strategic to avoid the need for frequent overrides, but also really to prolong the ones that we are lucky enough to pass. So, you know, it's a delicate balance and the budget is a huge part of what the school committee does. And I think, you know, we need to be strategic about overrides and sensitive, sensitive to the ask of the townspeople, you know, and just, you know, make them judiciously and as conservatively as we can. But unfortunately, I do think it is a-
I do think there are plenty of times where they are necessary, and I usually am a yes voter on overrides. I just think if we want to talk in terms of options as to what I might want to look at, if we were in a position to try and stretch our time between overrides a little longer than we have, I will say we've done a pretty good job. And I think the idea of the stabilization fund to front-load it early and draw from it later and, you know, have a coherent plan for the time between override requests was a wise plan, and I think that was a good idea. However, one, if I needed to start to pick apart something in order to try to move longer from one override to the next, I think some of the places I'd have to consider would be looking at items that begin as grants and then get adopted into the budget in subsequent years. I think that's where some of those metrics I mentioned earlier come in, because often things that start as grants, not always, but often, are things that aren't necessarily core education. So those automatically ought to have the question asked about them, you know, can we sustain this for the long term? It's, we probably want to, but can we? And then I think there are other things in town where we might begin with the feeling that these things are going to be able to be rented out and generate their own revenue and eventually become self-sustaining. There's been a couple of such things in the past recently. I think we need to revisit those regularly. Are they meeting the criteria that we set for them? Are they becoming self-sustaining or are they not? You know, and really think about the likelihood of some of those things not meeting the goals we've set for them and, you know, hanging on to the budget and increasing and inflating the spending. So, you know, I can't tolerate cuts to core education, I can't tolerate cuts to staff, but I think we need to be wiser about some of the extras along the side, just to be sure that we can have a true long-term model that works for everybody.
Kind of, a lot of my points are in line with what the other candidates have mentioned, but, so I don't think that override should be as a rule of plan for Ipswich, but as it's been stated, I understand that there are going to be proposed as investments for our schools as needed, despite prudent budget management. So as many of us know, the 2015 override was projected to have money in the stabilization fund available for five years, but it's now projected to be available and useful through about seven years. So this tells me that our school committee has been working within reason and respects taxpayer dollars. We already went over why the school budget's going up faster than our funding. So the school committee must have a broad view and understanding of components of the school budget and offer creative solutions when available. So there should be investigation and communication about how large-scale initiatives like the school building project may impact operational override requests in the future. And eventually, we might realize what might feel like a larger investment may actually have a greater rate of return and positive impact on the budget in the long run. So the school committee needs to be aware of available state grants, including money coming from the American Rescue Plan. And also, there needs to be continued collaboration between the school committee and the FEPI's trust and the IEF as appropriate. Additionally, Ipswich must have collective and collaborative efforts with all town committees to ensure there's long-term prioritization and planning of- with all town committees to ensure there's long-term prioritization and planning of capital projects in town. So ideally, we're not asking taxpayers for everything all at once. The school budget comprises over half of our town budget. So again, all residents with or without children in the school system need to be involved and informed. If we want them to support our schools, which will allow our community to grow and prosper. So when it comes to the next override proposal, the communication has to be clear and that is what is it we need to maintain or gain and what is the consequence of a failure?
Let's compare those two. I would say they are both very important. We have made STEAM a priority in our district in the last four or five years, and I think that's great. I think it teaches kids a lot of, a lot of skills they need for life. You know, it's very project-based, hands-on learning. And, and I think those skills are valuable and I, I love that our district has worked those into the the long-term education plans, both the elementary plans and the secondary plans. So I absolutely support STEAM education. Civics and history, you know, is, is part of our curriculum in the upper grades, but I would love to see it get more traction and be rolled into, you know, across more, more grades. My daughter's a freshman and her favorite class, you know, maybe besides kindergarten, because everybody loves kindergarten, was her civics class in eighth grade. She, you know, it was obviously a, a very exciting political time to be taking a civics class. And that class, I would say, has kept her the most engaged and, and interested. And, and I know she will get more of it later in her high school experience, but I think we need to you know, be revisiting how we teach history in terms of, you know, looking at everything through a social justice lens. And civics is a huge part of that. And I would like to see it rolled out more throughout the district, starting in the earlier grades.
As a person who works in a largely STEAM field myself, as a matter of fact, my husband as well. Of course I support those. Those are where a majority of some of the most in-demand jobs are these days. But I also would like to point out the A in STEAM, the arts. Because that is crucial to me. I mean, I was a band kid growing up and I'm still a band kid now. I even, I still play music, so I absolutely support the arts as well. But civics and history, I think, you know, more than creating good employees, more than creating, you know, people prepared for the next high-tech industry. We're trying to create good people. And I think we are in a country plagued with incivility right now, plagued with a lack of understanding, plagued with a lack of context. So I can't imagine going without those two topics. And as a matter of fact, I think, you know, the civics and history lessons to address a question that was emailed in about thoughts about the social justice curriculum that is being adopted. I think it is important to weave those topics into our history and civics because to me, they can't be separated. You know, we, you and I may not have learned history or civics through that same lens, but I think we can't miss the opportunity to, to bring some of the current events topics and their historical basis into our teaching in schools, again, with the goal being not just to make good workers, not just to make, you know, smart engineers, but to create good people. Thank you.
Yes, I think it's all important. You know, we're talking about curriculum and that's important for the school committee, committee to support, but ultimately that's going to come down to what our educators are giving us. And that might come from feedback from the town. So the school committee should set the stage and support what our educators in our town wants our children to be learning. And again, as it's been touched upon, I'm impressed with the messaging even my first grader is receiving in terms of racial equality and social justice. And I've been also happy with the community involvement the school committee has provided with that. I was happy to attend a virtual workshop on that topic that the school committee ran. And I think it's a great opportunity for the school committee and the community to kind of work together and see what the vision is for our students.
I think that the key in evaluating kind of the importance of any subject is just looking at holistically and saying, are we preparing well-rounded, you know, prepared, aware students? And are we equipping them to be able to go on to what they choose to do after leaving Ipswich High School? I, I look at, you know, the policy of creating curriculum, you know, as being something that certainly a school committee can decide what we want to put as far as policies and goals into our district. And then relying on superintendent principals and teachers to implement that policy so that we're meeting our goals. You know, in the context of looking at social justice, you know, I am a supporter of the curriculum that's being woven in and the standards through the Learning for Justice program. I think it's a really remarkable program and I look at kind of even if something is important and basic as having the same language that people are using. I've had questions from people that were not speaking the same language because I think of perceptions of what racial curriculum, curriculum that's dealing with race and diversity are founded on. And I think having those discussions is going to be really important. I know that that's something that's been voiced in our community and in school committee meetings is that students and some teachers don't feel equipped to have really important discussions. So using an opportunity in the context of civics and current events, I think can be helpful. On, on the STEM side of events, I think that is where are we have an awful lot of jobs that are going to be used, that are going to be based on those skills. So it's really important that we also are having those offerings and that they're you know, cutting edge and robust and advanced level topics so that we're preparing people to be out in the 21st century, you know, economy and, and world.
Honestly, quite the back pocket topic for me personally. So I think one of the numbers or one things the school committee can and should do is to support our CPAC. And for people who are not part of that, that is the Special Education Parents Advisory Committee. It is a group of parents who are affected by special education with one or more of their children and who, you know, discuss and raise issues that are of concern to the special education parent community. But, you know, a couple of other things, since we saw this question come by an email. I do think there's room to look into a little bit more of an organized approach to some of the higher frequency disabilities. You know, not to leave any off the list, but for example, dyslexia, ADHD and autism. While every child with any one of those disorders is a little bit different from the next, there are some commonalities around which a bit more of an established framework could exist that does not currently exist. And I think another important one is if we as a district have stated ourselves to be philosophically in favor of the co-teaching model, then we need to do a lot more to make it universally available. Right now there are vast disparities as to some classrooms or grades being fully staffed for co-teaching and others that are not. So I think we really need to decide which lane we're going in on that topic and get in it and drive in it. Additionally, I think, you know, we need to ensure the adequacy of the human resources available to special education students. I mean, it's naturally impossible, not even just difficult, but impossible to speak of specific services because one child, what he or she may need is, might be quite different from the next. But we have to ensure the staffing is there to meet the needs. And lastly, one idea. It's a little bit in-between, but is since the school committee serves such a policy-oriented role. One thing I think I would like to see a policy on, you know, and then the implementation of said policy. It could be left to the, you know, discretion of each individual school. I do see a lack of support, maybe not the right word, but partly support or awareness in extracurricular activities. Whether that is a school play, a performance, a sport, an after-school program. Those tend to be left off the topic when it comes to special education. And actually a student with, you know, depending on their level of special education support is entitled to support at after-school extracurricular activities that are school-sponsored. So I think that needs to be looked at. Thank you.
So first I want to say, I'd never thought about extracurriculars, like Lisa said, and I think that's a really interesting point. So, but again, I think the school committee needs to have a strong relationship with CPAC and welcome their advisory pertaining to special education. Special education, it needs to be budgeted for. And we also can't just have it on the budget and say, okay, we have the budget for it, but what we're budgeting for, is it actually feasible? Is it happening? So it's important for us to value all levels of the services we're giving in special education. So when it's possible and appropriate, we're able to keep students and families involved in our school communities and our greater town community. And in terms of special education at the elementary schools, I would like to see space for it to be delivered effectively.
As a school committee member, I would, you know, serve to or seek to be able to listen, you know, to all representatives from CPAC or other parents who are in that group, but still are sharing some of the same struggles in accessing equal education for their kids. I know that in some cases, the CPAC group, because it's also school-sponsored, that there's other supports and other groups in town. And those are really important to be able to bring those ideas in. One issue that I see now is that there's an inequity between the provision of special education services between schools and a child that may have a set of a diagnosis or challenges at one school may not be getting the same type of support in whether an IEP or another program at another school. So that needs to be evened out district-wide. There also needs to be extra parent and family support so that they can understand what services their child may be entitled to. An issue that we had in our family is that we felt we didn't get the, a proper scope and range of evaluations. And when we pressed the district on it, it was because it was not requested. And I had an issue with that, saying, well, who is in a better position to judge what the type of evaluation that a child needs? Is it a parent or professional? So I want everybody who's involved to be, make sure they're coming at it from an individualized plan and in the best interest of a child. I also think that it's important that we access services as early as possible. I say that for two reasons. One, early intervention has proven to be able to help a lot of children in catching up and being prepared so that the level of services they need in the future is less. It also is when you get into the older grades, there is more stigma and challenge of being able to access those services. And if we can have an earlier time, an earlier effort to end success in reaching kids, I think we'll have a better success. I also think that we should be investing so that we're providing as many services to as many students that need them in district. That will save us money from doing outplacements. And we can also, if we really want to value special education, we can make those services so extremely just wonderful that we're going to educate kids who choose to come to Ipswich because our special education programs are so robust. So I would certainly be a voice for special education. And another presence, making sure that children can access and families can access all the services they need as a member of the school committee.
A lot has been said that I agree with from all, all of the candidates. I feel that special education students should be a part of every decision that we make and every policy that we review. I think it's sort of a lens that we should look and sort of always be thinking you know, about these students and making sure that we, you know, everything we, everything we decide and every policy we make is, you know, is, is inclusive of these students and is beneficial to these students. I agree with the collaboration with the CPAC. And to be honest, having been on the school committee for four months, I know it has been a very unusual year. I haven't heard from the CPAC. I haven't heard a report back from our liaison to the CPAC and I'm, you know, I'm not trying to fault anyone, but I, I'm just saying, I think there is room for more more, you know, better relationship with them. Because I, you know, it's an important group and I think the school committee needs to hear from them regularly about what, you know, what their needs are and what we can do to help them. And I do understand also that as you know, I don't have a student with a special, you know, I don't with, with special education needs. And, and so some of that is on me to reach out. You know, and make that effort. And another thing I think we can do is, I think the school committee should, you know, eight, 10 years ago, I remember going to school committee meetings and there was presentations from administrators, from teachers on different issues. So we could really get a sense of what exactly is going on in the schools. I worry that we've entered into a time a little bit of sort of blind faith a little bit. You know, that the leadership team and the superintendent is, you know, telling us that X, Y, Z is being done. And I, I think there's a a lot of room for accountability and, you know, asking for those and expecting those, you know, those presentations from, you know, again, either the leadership team, teachers to show us exactly what's going on and what's needed. I have been reviewing the dyslexia new guidelines that just got put out by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. You know, it's, it's a long document, but I'm making my way through it. And I agree with the co-teaching is a great program, but you know, instead of rolling it out system-wide, I think we need to be strategic because some grades might need it more than others. Some classrooms might need it more than others. But I think it's a great model. That has worked really well. I know, you know, for example, at the Winter School. And I think we need to be strategic, but definitely work on rolling that out more district-wide. And then the last thing is just the Special Education Stabilization Fund is something that has also been put in place that has really helped budgeting for special education and sort of stabilizing those funds. So when unanticipated costs come up, we are a little bit nimble and able to kind of respond to those, those expenses as they come up.
You reminded me, Jeff, when you said like early identification of kids is important. And I think we need to recognize in Ipswich, we have such an asset with our birth to three program. And, you know, that's a great place for, for, not only for families to connect, but also for families who need resources of all kinds to be identified and supported. And so I think as the school committee, if we, it's our task to really support the birth to three program and again, increase community outreach for that program. So as I'm not on the school committee yet, I can give my feedback as a parent of a child in the school and as a graduate of the school. And I really think something that we can work on is cohesion between the two elementary schools. There's just so many positives that can come from that financially, socially, educationally. I think there's a real, a lot of opportunity, especially now, again, with new administrations coming on. So it's an exciting time.
What I would like to see is, I would like to see there be a very purpose-driven vision. So I would like there to be very strong leadership who is going to take a long view of what do we want to achieve as a district? How are we going to enhance education? How are we going to produce better global citizens? And have that be at the forefront of all of the decisions that we're making in all buildings. I think that we've been very lucky to have visionary leaders. And it's so critical that we prepare for their departure when that happens. And I think that we have a great opportunity now with the hiring of two elementary principals to find those new visionary leaders coming into the district at the same time that are going to be collaborative. They're going to care about all kids. They're going to be consistent in the way they applica, or that they apply their principles. And I think that's going to have a great effect. And I hope that we just put those strong leaders in and that they gets clear direction from the school committee of a vision that we want as a community.
Jeff, I'm thinking about this in two ways. One is sort of a curriculum piece, which I know is, you know, does not necessarily fall under the purview of the school committee, but it's something I would like to see, you know, and, and one of them is happening. It's an increase in the foreign language program across the district. And I'm excited to see that, that we're kind of bridging that gap. We have it in the high school, you know, the upper middle school, high school, and we're sort of, you know, we're sort of starting to close that gap and introduce it in the elementary schools, which I think is really exciting. And then as well as sort of expanding that civics program throughout the district and weaving it in with the social justice curriculum. But then besides curriculum, I think, you know, accountability and better communication with the public, I think is essential. And I do feel like there's a lot of divisiveness that has happened over the school building project. And I, I do feel like there's a lot of divisiveness that has happened over the school building project. And I think we need to build the trust back up and the communication if, if we want to move forward and get some of these big things done, we need to get done. We need to have better transparency and accountability.
Be very quick. I think there are a couple of themes I'd like to see. One of the first one is unity and community support. We have to work together or we're going nowhere. The second is, I would like to see openness to stakeholder involvement. And for me, the biggest stakeholder there could possibly be are the parents and the residents. And then I would like to see internally amongst the committee, a habit and a practice of self assessment. Let's, let's think about decisions we made five years ago, and let's make sure those are correct today. It's not about second guessing yourself. It's not about going back on a decision. It's just about validating. Did we achieve what we were looking to do in that decision? And if we didn't, what adjustments do we need to make to course correct and get to where we were intending to go in the first place? Those are the three things I'd like to see most.
The, I mean, I think what I want everybody to know is that I believe that as a school committee member, I can be somebody who brings people together, who can create consensus. I look at the coalitions of folks that are supporting me, and I see that there's a tremendous amount of overlap between folks who support me and folks who support another candidate. I think I see that between myself and these others more than any of the other combinations. I also look that I can be somebody who is going to push for change. I think that we are a district that has incredible opportunity in front of us. And I think that we need people who are not going to settle for the status quo or the way that we've done things. I think as our school committee changes from a, an older, more established board to new voices, I think that's going to be really important that every decision gets to get looked at again. It gets to be considered through a new perspective and with fresh eyes. And I want to be a part of the change that's going to increase learning opportunities, accessibility, engagement, teacher satisfaction, parent excitement, everything that touches our schools. And I know that that's a lot of work, but I think a school committee that works together with a diverse set of opinions and experiences, all pushing in the same direction can accomplish that. Thank you.
So as I stated at the beginning, I would love to be given the opportunity to continue what I've started on the school committee. I have good communication skills. I am an even keeled, thoughtful, you know, have a thoughtful nature and the ability to collaborate and really build consensus on issues. And I'm not afraid to ask questions and speak up and ask for change. And I, I go back to those two things that I do think really set me apart from the other candidates that I think are very essential in the school committee or, you know, any major town board, blackboard, school committee, et cetera. And that is experience. I've been listening for 12 years. And in general, the school committee is definitely trending towards, and you know, a new generation, which is exciting. And I love new and fresh perspectives, and I, I feel that actually I have a new and fresh perspective, but I also have that, you know, institutional knowledge of the district for being involved for so long on so many issues like overrides and, and other initiatives. And so the other thing that sets me apart is I do have experience in all schools. I have a middle schooler and a high school and a high schooler that have come up through the district. And I think that is really an essential piece on the school committee as well. I can focus on the whole district. I acknowledge of the whole district and really have the ability to focus on all students and not just kind of what I know. So I would encourage you to vote for me on the 18th, and thank you for listening tonight.
Well, I think my most important message to everybody is no matter who you vote for, please vote. That's, that's the key to everything. I hope you'll consider me. I think, you know, choosing anything with regard to our children or people we care about is automatically part largely in emotional decision often. I know I've been there at various times in my own kids' education experiences. What I think we also want to consider is having a little bit of yin to that yang. We are all going to be emotional about the topic, whatever it may be, if it affects someone we care about. But on the other hand, what objective information can we bring into the conversation to balance out some of those subjective thoughts we all have at various times? That's what I would be interested in doing. Appealing to the wants and the needs and the feelings of the residents, but also looking at what is the wise choice? The most common sense and pragmatic thing that meets those wants and needs in the best possible way. Thank you, and please do vote.
I know there are exciting and challenging times ahead of us as a town and for our schools. I understand the role and responsibility of the school committee during these times. I'm running with ideas, but not a personalized agenda, and I'd like to be an advocate for our community. I bring a unique skill set with a tireless work ethic. I'll be ready to put in the hard work by researching and being prepared. And I look forward to being an active participant in general meetings as well as subcommittees. I'm ready to communicate with all interested parties. I want to see the school committee setting the tone in the town. Chatter should be informed and respectful. I'm ready to collaborate with other board members and deliver cohesive messaging. I'm ready to engage our community in support of our schools. So I hope to see you all, along with your neighbors, friends and family, exercising your power to vote one week from tomorrow, Tuesday, May 18th.